Are we all ready?
Yes.
Okay. We'll call this meeting to the right. We wanted to stand for the pleasure of the students, but realize we're at a work session, but sitting up here, so we do not have that. So we'll just go right into it. And Dr. Boyson, thank you for waiting for us and helping us with the JAG implementation.
Yeah, no, good. Thanks for having me here today. And we also have Nicole Fettie with us. And Nicole Fettie is the teacher at Roosevelt who is teaching the JAG program this year. So I'll give a little historical background on JAG. And then you get to hear some really good stuff from Nicole about what it looks like at Roosevelt this year and some great opportunities that the children have had because of that program. So we're going to start out with JAG and give a little historical background in that structure and then plans moving forward for the 2223 school year. So what is JAG? When we think about that acronym, it stands for Jobs for American Graduates. It's a state-based, national nonprofit organization to support young adults moving through high school, the goal of graduation, and then employment opportunities with a rewarding career. So not just looking forward to what they want to do, but that future job market and how we can help them. So nationwide, it's been around for 40 years. And so when you think about that, great history, they've helped 1.5 million students that face significant challenges, helping them to reach that academic success. And there's a criteria, and we'll see that later, but the students that are accepted into that program. So when we think about JAG, there's a JAG advantage. And again, it goes back to that 40-year history. JAG sets the students apart from all other youth in today's emerging workforce through student-centered programs that helps young people achieve their fullest potential. And that JAG advantage, this model, it really looks at specific work-related competencies that work ethic, behaviors, job attainment, conflict resolution, and leadership skills. And Nicole will talk about that and some of the things that she has seen with those young students that she's working with and how she's helping them to be prepared for that job market and how they present themselves. It also helps that JAG specialist, which is Nicole here, to establish that connection. We always say that relationship with student and teacher is very, very important. And we know that JAG specialist at that level, having the right person in that job helps to make sure the program's successful. And then we create partnerships with work-based and learning opportunities with employers. Part of the JAG specialist's job is to go out and make those connections, bring speakers into the classroom, and then also go out to universities and job areas to give them exposure and see what opportunities are there. And the school provides the link to the community-based services and to help students. You know, when we think about filling out a college application or a FASA or even a resume, creating a resume, those are some of those skills that they do within that classroom. And then the students support and hold each other accountable. So that JAG community, what does that classroom look like and the expectations they have for each other? So it really is a smaller community that they hold each other up. And JAG in South Dakota, we'll talk, you know, and nationwide, it's been around for 40 years. But when we think of the history of JAG in South Dakota, we have a JAG mission, and it's to help young people create promise, a great promise to succeed both in school and on the job, leading productive and rewarding careers. And so that's the mission of the JAG program in South Dakota. It started in 2009 in two high schools, Wagner and Andy Central. And then there's a big gap there, five years before we held our first South Dakota Leadership Conference across the state. And then in 2017, they added, the program expanded, so there were six high schools and two middle school programs. And again, it kind of just didn't grow as fast as they wanted it to. And Governor Noem had gone out to Wagner and had seen the program. She came back to legislative session and asked them to fund a state director, and that's Beth Schneider in the state, and then to give startup grants for districts to get this program started. So every program that starts in the state gets $10,000 to help with some of those initial expenses. It takes a part-time JAG specialist, which right now Nicole's considered a part-time JAG specialist. She has one classroom which can facilitate 15 students. And so when you think about FTE allocations, some of the training that is required, some of the opportunities for students, it is a cost to a district. So that grant, that startup grant, does really help you to see what's possible in your district, to get it started and move it forward. And so here's a map just showing where the JAG programs are across the state. Roosevelt is the first one in Sioux Falls. And that, we had the conversation last year of what other opportunities can we have for our students and pathways? We looked at two different programs, and JAG was one of them. And with the state initiative and support, it was a natural fit for us. And we were looking through the model, and we said, okay, maybe we could, Dr. Noel and I were talking high school principals, maybe we could start second semester. So it just would have started in January. And Tim Hazlitt at Roosevelt was like, hey, we can do this. We can jump on. So he grabbed Nicole, and he said, come on up. And Nicole was excited, and she can talk just a little bit about the ability to get started and her history with that, too. So they jumped on board. She got trained in July, and she went running with the program, and we have some great results. So again, why does the model work? It really looks at different metrics and collecting different information throughout the program. Nicole's responsible, that JAG specialist is responsible for using the South Dakota program, the National Program for inputting data, multiple touch points throughout the semester. They really work on retention rates, graduation rates, they look at attendance, but with the overall goal of full-time employment for students. And then it's that continual touching back and talking to that student even after they leave the program. So right now, those are the South Dakota numbers. They have 100% retention rate, graduation rate's 89%, and full-time employment, 87%. Again, it's a short history with a small number of students. So they've had 600 students in South Dakota so far since 2009. And so here's our data. And this was the data from the state website as of June 2021. And you can see their history. They started collecting the information in FY '16 all the way through '21. You can see our students participating. That number was growing. And then, you know, 2019 into 2020, unable to recruit students. And they have an elaborate interview process for admitting students into the program. That was that COVID year. So then last year, '21, 128 students across the state. And you can see the state graduation rate versus the JAG national graduation goal. And their goal is 90%. And with such low numbers, one or two students not making it to the end changes that percentage in the state. So, but 89% of the JAG students in the state of South Dakota graduated last year. And then if you look down at the bottom on that, on the bottom chart, those are some of the metrics they collect. Graduation, do they have employment, full-time employment, which is considered 30 hours, total full-time employment with positive outcomes, and then further education rate for all post-secondary students. So again, they look at those.
And I'd like to add, just from my conversations with Beth Schneider and some others, is I do, the other asterisk on those years is I think the Wagner director moved to Black Hill State. So as Nicole will provide for us, it's really important who that teacher is and those relationships they grip, they start with the students, because it's all about relationship building. And once somebody leaves, that makes it hard. So there was a steep drop there at Wagner, I believe, in those that. And also some of those schools were not open during COVID as well because of COVID.
Right. Yeah, right. A lot of schools didn't jump back in last year, and so that would impact that enrollment. And you're right, as we say, that teacher's the most important person in the room because they develop those relationships, the connections with kids, and they can get kids to do things because of that connection and that relationship. And so that's what makes our program successful. So a JAG specialist, again, a part-time specialist can serve 15 students, a full-time specialist can serve 35 to 45 students. In Sioux Falls, we're running a multi-year program, which means that we can serve students in all grade levels, 9, 10, 11, 12. And so as the program goes this year, Nicole has her cohort of students, which includes 9, 10, 11, and 12, all grades. And then next year, she'll bring in another cohort. So she'll have the group that's together this year, and then she'll bring in that next year's group. And they'll transition through as they go through the high school years. But that, again, we talked about their relationship and the importance of having the right person in that seat as a JAG specialist. They need to be student-centered, they need to be able to connect with employers. They talk about employability skills. They're a guidance counselor. They're a mentor. They're a mom, you know? And just having all those skills. And they provide academic remediation, career and post-secondary counseling. Can they help them with a job application? Can they help them with a resume? How about the FASA? How about a post-secondary application? Just all of those things. And then they're responsible for 12 months of follow-up. So whenever that student leaves high school, that specialist has to follow up with them monthly, right? Is that right, Nicole? So they have to follow up monthly with those students to see where they're at, what are they doing? Are they working? Are they in post-secondary? What's that look like? And so that's a responsibility, and then she has to document all that information, and that provides to the state and the National JAG program. So once they leave, they don't really leave. So JAG training. So when we think of that JAG specialist, we know that there's training that needs to help support that because that's a program in itself, not like any of our other programs. So the Department of Education and the National JAG model provides that, and we're very thankful for that. So they have monthly individual check-ins and data training with Beth Schneider and others. And then they have fall-in spring professional learning, and that's a two-day session that is held within the state. And then there's a national training seminar, and that varies in location, and that's held in the summer. And so giving you a little sneak peek, but all of our high schools will have JAG next year. And they're, and we're sending all of the four JAG specialists to that national training so they can make connections with everyone and help to develop our program, plus to develop our relationship between the four JAG specialists in the Sioux Falls school district. And then that's our JAG specialist. And so now we have the specialist, but then how do we select the students? And last year, again, we started the program, we're a little bit late behind that, but it's a true application and an interview with students in the schools to find the right students that would fit this model. And the counselors, the principals, the JAG specialists work together. And so we're really looking for students that are showing behaviors or have, and here's a list of things. They're one or more years behind their age group. So they're behind in credits, there's an attendance concern, their A.C., their academic scores are lower, they haven't passed the proficiency test for reading or math, above-average number of absences, closest friends maybe have limited educational experiences. And so really, we're looking for those students that have that growth opportunity, but they just need a little bit closer-knit group to help guide that, and that specialist can really keep track of them and help provide that guidance. And then within the classroom, they earn a credit, they earn a half a credit per semester for being in the JAG program. But then also, the state has a lot written away for the Department of Ed and the JAG so we can offer synchronous credit. So Nicole's qualified to teach certain classes, so as long as she's meeting the standards for those classes, the students can earn the JAG credit. And then the academic successes, yeah, is the one that they're working on right now. So that helps students earn those credits and move forward in towards that 22 credits for graduation. But then also the state has a lot written away for the Department of Ed and the JAG so we can offer synchronous credit. So Nicole's qualified to teach certain classes. So as long as she's meeting the standards for those classes, the students can earn the JAG credit. And then the academic successes, yeah, yeah, is the one that they're working on right now. So that helps students earn those credits and move forward in towards that 22 credits for graduation. And the model service activity, these are some of the things that as they're planning for the JAG program throughout the day and throughout the year, they look at academic remediation. How do I help support that student? How do I fill the gaps? They look at career association. So what is that child interested in? Who can I introduce them to? Where can we take them to see what might be a career opportunity? Community service projects, get them involved in that. Employability skills, those relationships, interview skills, field trips, guest speakers. They work on, as we said, guidance, counseling, and then workplace learning. And so those are all the things that they work on in the classroom. And then they do have to code those, how often those lessons are, again, in that JAG database. And then they run those reports for the state and the national. And then again, here's a competency and C clusters for JAG. Workplace skills, life skills, personal skills. And here's our data. So limited data because we've only had JAG for a semester. So I took the, we took the information from our current, we had 10 students in JAG last semester. So we took the data from fall of '20 on those same students to the fall of '21. And we compared their attendance and their credits earned. And those are the two areas that we, you know, retention, we're still, you know, we're like, again, we've only had that half a semester. So looking at, we decreased the number of days they missed so that by one day, so their, their attendance is better. And they averaged a half a credit more than they did last, during the first semester. So it's great for those kids. And again, that's semester for 10 kids. And so that's the two metrics that we could pull some information on to say, how are they doing with that first semester? And so good information. And for those kids, what was the comment, Nicole? What did they say?
Oh, well, I, I heard that not specifically like spring, but last year, fall, this year, which was a little bit less than that, and they were shot there. What kind of company did I really do that one better? And people don't feel better about school. I feel attacked it though.
It's working. So that's good. And that, those are the things when kids realize how they're doing, they feel like, okay, I can do this. This is, somebody's supporting me. Somebody's behind. And now we'll hear from Nicole, all the great things. So.
All right. As mentioned, my name's Nicole Betty. I'm in my third year at Roosevelt. I've been a teacher for 15 years though, so I'm just so excited to share this with you. Okay, so as Dr. Boyson mentioned, 15 students is the max for a JAG part-time specialist, up to 45 students for a full-time specialist. I have 10 students and I've gotten a really good opportunity in this first year to see how JAG is going to work for Roosevelt students and how it's going to, to work as a cohort model. And I have found such buy-in from the students. The new kids we, we got second semester were recruits by my own students. So I, I consider that a win. JAG South Dakota events. So we have had some really fun adventures this semester. The students got to attend the Leadership Development Conference held in Rapid City at Western Dakota Tech in October. None of the students had ever stayed in a hotel. None of them had been West River. So Chamberlain was a highlight, which was amusing for me. We visited Mount Rushmore. I took them through the Badlands. One of them was an Instagram-worthy moment, so I thought that was cool. They got to tour a technical college, which, you know, was their first exposure to post-secondary, which is really important for students who might not have previously considered post-secondary options. Some of them really liked Dakota, Western Dakota. Others were like, I know this is not a school for me, which is okay too. They need to understand where they fit in the, in the plan of their life. We spent a day and a half listening to speakers from Monument Healthcare and other speakers from all around the state. They got to choose which topics they wanted to listen to. So some students went together. Sometimes we went as a, as a group. Sometimes they went individually based on their interests. And it, it was just a really great experience for them to kind of see what's out there in the world and what other students are like. Most of the students in JAG keep to their friend group and aren't really exposed to extracurriculars. They're not involved in school. So it was good for them to have to present a, an icebreaker activity to the whole group of, you know, 100 and some odd kids. The, the young man who is the president of our career association got the jitters. And so with the girl who is a vice president grabbed the microphone. She's like, okay, friends, this is what we have to do. And I was just like, oh, yes, it's working. We also got to do a Capitol Conversations Day in January. Sorry, I skipped the second one. I'll, I'll move back up to that. That was recently, I think last week. I feel like we've already, this semester has been really long for some reason. So I took the kids to a legislative day at Pier and they got to listen in on the education committee and on, it was a state committee, I can't remember. But they all learned they don't want to be in government, which is pretty interesting. They got to meet the governor. And that was just a really cool experience for them to meet someone famous, right? They got a tour of the Capitol building and Capitol complex. And let's see, oh, and then they, then we gathered with the other JAG students to listen to Senator Troy Heinert and Deputy Secretary Mary Stodick-Smith and a lobbyist from, oh, Nathan Sanderson, I think. Okay, you're shaking your head, so I think you know. So it was really, it was a really good opportunity for students to just kind of hear what, you know, how things move through government. The community service projects. We, I had the students pick through the Helpline 211 for self. There, there are different community service projects available on there. And we spent a whole day just sort of like picking through all of those. And the students decided which opportunities they wanted to pursue. So they decided to do Monster Creative Kits for the children living at Children's Inn. And I think we created like 33 of them or something. There were that many kids there at the time. And then they decided to do blankets for South Dakota, or the project warm-up. So those are the two student-selected service projects we did last semester. We'll do another two this semester and they will be student-selected and student-run. Then we'll do a career development conference in March. And that will be in Mitchell at MTI. The students will again get to tour campus. They'll compete in various categories, public speaking, financial literacy, project-based learning. And I'm forgetting one, I'm sorry. But they can either compete independently or they can compete in a group. And so we're talking now about what competing independently means and how much courage that takes and how much practice will be needed. Presentation, you know, how, how you look, how you present yourself, those types of things. The national student events. If students compete in March and earn a top slot, they become eligible to compete at the Career Development Conference in Dallas, which would mean a plane ride for some of them for the first time ever. There wasn't an in-person leadership academy this year in Washington DC. It was virtual. And we did not attend that. It was, it just didn't really work with our, our schedule. So hopefully next year, we'll either be able to attend virtually or in person. So these are some of the pictures. Okay. This is from the Leadership Development Conference. These are the four kids who traveled to the conference. They are on our Career Association Advisory Board. So they had to interview for a position. They had to decide among the positions, which position they were most interested in pursuing. Go through an interview panel consisting of five adults they didn't, didn't know. Go through an interview of like 20 questions. And then in October, we took this trip. And like I mentioned, I took them to Mount Rushmore. I thought it was something famous, you know, that they would see in a book that would feel cool to them. As you can see, one of the pictures is at the Badlands. And then the other two are just a representation of what it means to be in JAG, to develop skills, to communicate with people you don't know, to be confident in how you present yourself and, and just have the courage to try things that you've never done before because that's such an important part of life. And if you leave high school without those skills, adult life can be really difficult. This slide includes, in the upper left-hand, you'll see the student initiation, which was the Career Association Initiation and Installation Ceremony. That was a tremendous amount of work, but it was worth every single second. The students had to present. The, the young lady in black, she is giving a speech introducing and initiating all of the other members of the organization. And they're taking an oath, so they had to repeat. We invited all of the principals and all of the counseling staff. And we had a meal during sixth period. Transportation issues prevented us from having a fully, you know, full-fledged installation ceremony in the evening when parents could attend. That will be a goal for next year. So the students commented that it was just a really great opportunity for them to get to know the counseling staff as people and the principals as people. They shared tables and they just chatted. And we had soup and, you know, buns and salad. And, and they just, I, I had fancy table class, the whole nine yards. I wanted to make it really special. I made my parents come and help me. So, you know, it was fun to see them when they walked in and saw like, oh my gosh, my teacher really put a lot of time and effort into this. It must, it means something, right? So that was really rewarding for me. And then just to see how much they enjoyed the experience. And I just actually had a student ask me the other day, can we do another thing like that this semester? Because I really enjoy getting to know the counseling department. So, and she was a, a new student to Roosevelt this year due to district, you know, rezoning or whatever. And she kind of struggled at the beginning of the year. So it was really fun to see her open up and so forth. Conversations at the Capitol in Pier. You can see that we are there with the governor and lieutenant governor. And we had to go shopping the day we left. The kids, you know, just didn't have clothing that was appropriate. They didn't have access to that. So we, we took a trip to Walmart and we talked about what is something appropriate to wear when you're meeting something, someone important or doing something important. And so we, you know, we've got clothes there. And it was funny because the, the boys, they really looked spiffy. They had bow ties. They were so cute. And the girls, you know, were like, oh, you guys look so handsome. And so then they saw the, some of the other kids who came and maybe they were in tennis shoes and jeans and they're like, why didn't you make, why didn't they have to dress up? You said we had to dress up. And I'm like, well, they're not with me. So we're dressing up and we're going to look appropriate and we're going to, you know, put our best face forward or whatever. So they got to shake the governor's hand. And I don't, it was just so, so refreshing to see how positive they were about that experience. Some of them weren't the biggest fans of the governor. So having, you know, for them being able to shake their, shake the governor's hand and introduce themselves, you know, my name is Nicole Betty. I'm from Roosevelt High School. It's nice to meet you. I was just like, oh, inside I was just so happy. The bottom picture is service learning projects. That's the Monster Kit that the students made for the children at Children's Inn. Obviously you can't go into Children's Inn, but I, I wanted the kids to be able to go there and give the materials to the person in the middle is the one who works there. She doesn't have anything in her hands. I wanted them to be able to go there so that it was something more tangible and real to them. Like not everyone is as fortunate as we are, even if we have little. So that was something at the end of the semester in, in the exam, one of the questions that I wrote was, what was the most meaningful experience in JAG this year? And I think three of the students commented that that specific activity was what was most meaningful to them because it allowed them to empathize with, you know, other people. That's another picture of us at the Capitol. Some of them obviously like to have their pictures taken and others don't. You guys have any questions about those? No? Yeah, this is Dr. Boyson. Thank you.
Ask one question?
Yeah.
So, did you select the first 10 or 12?
It wasn't me personally. It was counseling, principals, some teacher referral. We'll do a proper JAG evaluation coming up soon. So that by the end of the semester, the student has to go through the interview. The parents have to go through the interview so they understand what they're committing to. Part of, a big part of JAG is both wanting to be in JAG and needing JAG. So.
Great.
Just, I, I don't have a question. I just want to tell you, you're really developing skills in kids that would not have otherwise maybe had it so readily accessible and the level of confidence. And that just is such a game changer in the lives of these kids. And your energy that you have for it just radiates and it's, you're refreshing.
Thank you. That means a lot to me. I, I feel like beyond blessed that I was given this opportunity. I'm actually from Wagner. And so I, my dad was a guidance counselor there for 40 years. And so I know that what JAG can do for kids and how it can change their lives and the, and the trajectory of their lives. So when it was an opportunity, I did not waste any moments in saying, I will do this. It's just awesome. Thank you.
And you're taking the students to SDSU?
Yes. On February 23rd, we are going to SDSU so that they can see what a large university looks like. And they can tour the different departments, see how it feels for them. If it's something that they're interested in pursuing, they'll have the whole, you know, informational packet of, this is what it means to apply to college. This is how you pay for college, all of that stuff. Look at SDSU ice cream. So they're very excited about that. Yeah. Thank you.
So next year, so the goal is that we will expand JAG to all the three other high schools. So we'll have it at all four high schools. We are exploring the option of having JAG at Joe Foss and Axelle Park Building also. But for sure, these three high schools will add a JAG specialist. And they're all on board. We've talked about it. That's part of the budgeting process to budget for that JAG specialist moving forward, working on the applications with the state to make sure, because they can only take so many. But they have said that they would take on our high schools. So it's a great opportunity for students, gives them another pathway. And so we're excited about that. And Nicole will be our ambassador.
Definitely.
So we're very excited about that. What's your phrase when kids go to interview? Because it is very, it's appropriate for kids and it does make a difference.
There are two things that I tell them. One is fake it till you make it. So, you know, pretend. I mean, if, if, if you're not into something, pretend you are until you are, right? And then the other thing is dress for the job you want, not the job you have. So yesterday, can I show this? Yesterday, a student had a job interview at Slim Chicken's and he wore a suit and tie.
But then he was so excited.
So he has to go back today to meet with the general manager because they're interested in giving him management opportunity.
Of course. That's awesome.
I know. We, we celebrated in class today.
So those things wouldn't happen without Nicole. And like we said, it's that person in that specialist position to make those connections with kids. To give them opportunities and give them the skills that they need to be successful.
How many of your 10 students this year are seniors?
I wrote down.
I have two seniors. Yeah, it's, actually, one became a senior at, at semester time.
Awesome.
So one will definitely graduate. The other will graduate in summer school. So unless we can get a learning center period and, and do it, do it that way. Yeah. But she made great strides though. I mean, to become a senior at semester time was maybe not in the works until, you know, she had the support from her classmates and.
And with the cohorts, so this group will all stay together. So even when you have the new students next year with your second cohort, they'll, they'll be a separate cohort so they can feel comfortable in their group and all that. So.
And exactly. And what I'm particularly excited about with the new schools coming on is we can have the opportunity to do more community services projects, larger community service projects that make more impact. I, I think the more you can give or teach students the, the value of giving, the better we all become. And so I'm, they're really excited too. I told them that there will be JAG programs. I told them that there will be JAG programs that, at the other schools, so they're like, will we get to do things together? And I'm like, yeah, we will, hopefully, I mean, we'll make that happen, right?
This is why we all serve on the school board, is to hear about successful programs like this, that we can meet students where they are. And, you know, we've been looking at this for a while, and to now finally, it takes a while sometimes to get programs off the ground and approval and all that, but to have it now in fruition, it's just, to see you in this role is just fantastic. I hope there's three more people exactly like you that we can have for the other high schools and the other locations. Even middle school would be awesome. I know we're looking at curriculum changes and there, if there's some way we can help those students who.
Start the high school first.
Yep, exactly. I, I know we can't do it all at once, but that, that would be my dream, would be eventually to do that, you know, as a district, to do that, because it would be just fabulous. Seeing the results at other schools and why this was originally investigated was with our graduation rates with Native American students, that was the one minority group we were not having success in increasing that. And seeing the work that was done in Wagner and other schools and what, how they improved their graduation rates, it was, gave us the opportunity to look at some of that and hopefully add it to our wheelhouse of graduation rates too, so.
I mean, you, you said it earlier, we've said it many, many times, just giving those students another pathway to find success and find interests and to prepare them for a world outside of school is just phenomenal. You know, we've been, we talked earlier about embudsman, and you had to remind me, I'm like, I know what embudsman is, I can't remember what it was. But, you know, it's just like, it's just part of that, part of everything that we try to strive for here in the district. And just can't thank you enough for your support and your engagement with these students and what you've been able to give them this past year is just phenomenal, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? And we didn't have anyone sign up for public input, I believe, so you can just move on.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So, um.
Yep, we are adjourned until our Southeast Tech Board meeting. Thank you.